Okay, folks. We would all join us, please, for the pledge of allegiance. Sit down with the chair.
No, you're glad you're glad.
I think we have this coordinated by now.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, with that, before we call the select board meeting to order for August sixth, August sixth, August already, we're gonna have a, gonna open a public hearing and this is for the entertainment license for Coco's Sandwich Shop. Is there anyone here representing Coco's or have any questions, comments regarding the entertainment license for Coco's Sandwich Shop? Only one's going twice, nobody coming in live?
It seemed like there was only one page, is that standard?
Yes.
Okay.
For an entertainment license.
All right.
All right.
And it's only for one event?
No?
No, I don't think so.
They had it noted there, they had it daily.
Oh, first event.
Right, yeah, they had it daily on.
The first event, and then daily, okay, for lunch. Oh, no, and that, no?
Yeah, delayed, so.
There it is.
Cool, okay. Hearing, not hearing any other questions and comments, I'll, we'll close the public hearing and I'll open the Dever Scotta Select Board Meeting of August sixth, call to order. No proposed changes yet, folks, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the itinerary or the agenda as is right now, work our way through it. Got a few things to do here, but it'll, it'll go along, exciting stuff. Let's get the minutes out of the way, anybody have any revisions, changes, comments, questions on the minutes from last meeting?
Oh, it's getting boring.
I can't find any mistakes at all.
I'm trying to stick.
All right, so you gotta. All right, great, you wanna move that one, Tom, you didn't find it?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll move the approval of the July sixteenth minutes.
All right, thank you, Tom. Second. Dan's gonna take that one, awesome, all right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, minutes are moved, so we have financials, we have two payroll warrants, four and five, we had a long, an extra week thrown in there, so I'll move payroll warrants four and number five.
Second.
Second, Andrea's second, Alice, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, and everybody can see payroll, accounts payable number six, anybody had a chance to see that? Any questions, comments? Right?
Yeah.
I'll move AP six.
Second.
And Tom seconds, any discussion? Big hearing now, all those in favor? All right, there we go, okay. Next agenda, citizens' comments, general correspondence, anything, Andy, last minute?
Nothing that's
You're good.
Coming to mind or not on the agenda.
I don't think we have anybody live, anybody in the, in the panel out there, oh. Good, all right, we're gonna move along, well, did you wanna get anything on, on your report section, Andy?
Just two things, the next meeting will be state of officers to consider for MMA.
Okay.
Maybe municipal associations, executive board, just got that this week, so it'll be on your next meeting. And I'll touch quickly, I did get some numbers back for professional services for doing some mapping survey work and design work for Chapman Street Drainage Improvement.
Yeah.
And that's something you might entertain on your agenda tonight.
Okay, this is the other memo.
I meant to include it, just forgot, someone had reached out and asked what the stuff timeline was.
Okay.
Okay, that's something you're willing to entertain later on in the agenda.
Okay, I wouldn't sure if that would, I know we have an exact at the end there, so I'm sure, there, okay, yeah, gotcha. Yeah, we can, we can pull back into that PM, so.
Otherwise, in length of agenda we have, if you have any questions about what's going on, let me know, but didn't do the report.
No, that's fine, that's why I didn't think I needed to add in, I said it wasn't in there, but there's been a lot going on, so. So, does anybody have any questions for, Andy, before we move on, anything, or is it just day to day? Good, cool. All right, let's move on to official action items here, so I think we have a ceremony here we need to take care of, right? We have an interim chief possibly, maybe?
We do have an interim chief, we need to let him swear at us.
All right, yeah. Hi, Phil.
Let's go through something quick, for those that aren't aware, at this point, a little over a month ago, Chief Warley kid advised that he was gonna be resigning to take an opportunity that was good for him, his family and his career, and after getting that news, it became clear to me that, you know, very quickly, I was like, okay, what do we do? Two big things, we gotta get this position filled, we gotta get someone in here in the interim to kinda keep us moving forward and we keep, keep the staff, you know, in good status, continue the good work that the chief had, had done previously. And the department, as some of you might know, became accredited through MLEAP last couple of years, and that was a big accomplishment. That reaccreditation, I believe, is coming up soon, it's like a three-year period, review policies again, so that's, we wanna make sure we can keep that moving forward, given all that went into that. And after thinking about how to, you know, fill this period while we're looking for a search and what comes next, and talking with a couple of folks and thinking about Phil, I mean, what he served for the town for a few years, I was thinking, Phil's someone who knew the officers, he knows our policies, he knows our community and thought maybe he could be, maybe willing to come out of retirement.
He had all of, like, two months for retirement in there as well?
Yeah.
What was it for?
To try and help us through this period and keep us moving forward. And for those that don't know, Phil, or hadn't met him in the five years he's been with us, came in twenty twenty. And I know in just, in being able to work and talk with him in the years, he had been full officer, full-time officer for us. And for those that aren't aware, I know when he moved to Maine, one of the things he aspired to do was grow his John Deere collection to help maintain the grass farm that he has. And on a lighter note, in all seriousness, you know, Phil comes with a lot of leadership experience, both in the Air Force and with the Sheriff's Department down in South Carolina. He managed budgets, he's managed people, and he managed, you know, community situations that arise. And so he's a good, good person and a good fit for our community to be able to continue us moving forward in this transition. And so with that, Phil, would you mind raising your right hand and swearing to the following? Do you, Phil, Tessier, solemnly swear that you will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Maine, including the laws and Home Rule and Home Rule Charter of the Town of Dever Scotta?
I do.
Do you swear to discharge the duties of your office as a police chief with fidelity and honor, without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability?
I do.
And do you swear to abide by the law enforcement code of ethics?
I do.
Do you swear to perform the tasks assigned to you as the police chief during this interim period?
I do.
With that, we are pleased to officially recognize you as the police chief for Dever Scotta.
Thank you.
Interim.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought the industry, that's some.
I appreciate the confidence the board has placed in me, and I'll try and carry out the duties best to my ability and I'll make sure Andy finds somebody.
If I can go back to retirement. So far. Thank you for everything.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Okay. Yeah, that's, I would like to comment on that, that we're, I think we're extremely lucky in that situation where we're able to, Bill was able to step up and work with Andy and fill that position as intern, because that's a hard spot to fill for a temporary placement, so, and then having him come in and knowing everybody working with the PD, I mean, it's just, yeah, I just had to peel him out of retirement, so, yeah, we'll get you back there. Well, great, okay, well, that brings us down to the, the Police Chief Evaluation Committee Formation and Appointment, so this is do you wanna get a little background on this, Andy, so this is our last conversation about looking for, like, going through the main chiefs association and then having a a town group, swearing that you, you've had some folks that you've spoken to and you started out with a list and worked through it.
Yeah, yeah. So I had given you, just this afternoon, I've got a copy earlier today or yesterday, but yesterday of a draft contract with main chiefs of police association. And the last meeting, I believe I had shared with you a draft of a contract for the search process, but I only had a brochure of what the evaluation of the department would entail, and so I've met with them last Thursday, the executive director and one other person, another chief that's doing some work at Thomaston right now on their department evaluation, which just wrapped up, so I haven't had a chance to look at what that looks like on the out, on the outset of that, but was pleased with the meeting, they're able to, you know, get right to work for us, I shared with them a draft schedule, which is included in the memo. And they thought that that was the table, and you might be able to speed up a little bit on that tail end, depending on how how that, how it'll go, and had a couple spots for community influence, and so with that, I know, one of the steps, the way they're looking at it, there'd be the executive director for main chiefs of police and myself, and potentially one other person that's gonna be involved in the evaluation aspect from them, the department, to probably vet some of the initial resumes that we get and candidates that would apply, and then from there, there'd be a list that we recommended be further reviewed, in the past, there's been this kind of citizen panel that's been able to interview the candidates for different positions, and no one sergeant's position was hired, that was what had happened.
Yeah.
And so with that, trying to identify a list of different kind of representative groups or people that can bring that perspective from different aspects of the community, so I see I have the that group in mind for an HR legal and Cheryl's our treasurer, was on the HR workforce for a long time, so including her, as community leader, was thinking someone from the select board might wanna be part of that process. The board decided that's what you want, we want representing the board in that. And I had reached out to the sheriff, or the former sheriff in Knox County, the current chief of Rockland, and he's willing to serve on that citizens' board as well, his perspective is they've done a lot around community policing and working with youth up there in the last few years since he's become chief, and they've become accredited as a community policing agency.
Okay.
And I thought he had some good perspective to bring and being another police chief, it'd be helpful to work through some of those questions that we have and work through that. Amy Gupton, current school board member, RSU forty-eight, new unit that's been formed, she also serves on the boards of the kids. And lives in town. Sally Farrell, she's the director of operations for the YMCA and is involved in other community aspects. And I know it's a strong partnership our police department particularly has had with them and outreach into the community.
Yeah, absolutely.
Dennis Hilton is a big representative, kind of the business owner community, he's got a few different business operations currently and over the past, and so I feel like he might be a good litmus or representation of kind of a business community sector, and he was willing to serve, and then for residents, Amy Lalim is willing to serve on that, and she was involved in the sergeant search before.
Yeah, she was active there, yeah.
And then Jake Pinkham, on our fire department, somewhat recent graduate, works for Midcoast Energy, he's been, he's willing to serve. So that seems like a reasonably representative group to kind of work, that's not the only kind of community involvement will, will have in this, it was the thought that we gotta work through with the group that's gonna be working with us, is to, like, what they recommend and what the board kind of really wants to have, whether it's a town hall forum, when you get down to your top one or two people, or something in between, a survey of sorts, I mean, those steps that we can involve the community in this process. And so with that, that was the, the folks I was thinking of having your point to kind of symbolize that group being created, and you have the, the draft contract now, the price was lower than what I had had before, I think it was eight grand for the search and another six, I believe, or the, yeah. We've got eleven, eleven-five now.
It came in at fourteen before, now it's down to eleven thousand five hundred for both the search and the evaluation.
And this board will be on both things, right? The search and
Primarily the search.
Both, just the search, not the police management of
Not the assessment part of it, no.
So that's something, that's something that, that organization will have typically three people, current chiefs typically come in that aren't as familiar with our community, our department, our staff, be able to come in with their experience, their perspective and share an output, I mean, when I get Thomestons, I'll, I'll send that out, so you can see what
Does that evaluation by those chiefs involve community input as well?
It does, like, that level of which, you know, we can kind of tailor and decide. I know Thomason had had at least one kind of community forum where they had, they felt pretty good turnout.
Oh.
And they had people come and it was all in support, there was questions at Thomason about whether there should or shouldn't be, I mean, it became pretty clear that there was great support for the department.
Yeah.
And people were seen pretty happy that the opportunity was there, so.
Nice.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Daryl Day to the, as a select board representative.
Thanks.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
And I'm sure Daryl's big, but I, I, I don't know how we make these decisions as a board by just somebody nominating somebody without any I don't know, I'm just sure.
They've been on the board and the community and all that.
Yeah. I'm not objecting, I'm just I'm just wondering, that's all, how it happens, so. I'm gonna nominate you.
No, I, I, I would, that's part of the reason I nominated him, because I am sort of maxed out on things that I'm doing, but also
I'm pretty maxed out.
Yeah, I've been hurting by all the other things that the rest of us are doing, being bored, so I thought.
Well, I, I, and, yeah, I, I, I think, I'll speak for you, I'm gonna speak for you, but I think all of us, yeah, we all have deep ties to the community, and I, I think with the like, your question, it is a valid question, like, where, you know, how do you vet and what do you do, but knowing, I mean, like, Daryl's background is, is there, deep ties to communities, he's got, he works here, he's got family here, I mean, I think he doesn't I think all, I mean, everybody's kind of on the, I'd say probably on the same level as far as, so, it's maybe not six to one, but five, five, five to one, so I, I'd be got appointment for him, give him something to do. Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, well, no, that Tom didn't ask you, I just, he just
I feel like I'm in depth of the community and I, I, I would love, I'd be interested in doing it, all right.
So you made a motion to appoint Daryl to the proposed group?
Yeah.
So we've got a second for that discussion, call, vote, and then we've gotta move the group itself, right? So we'll get to the whole thing, so, all right, so any other discussion on, on Tom's motion? Okay, I'll call for all those in favor. And, okay, opposed? And abstained?
I, I'll abstain, because I, I'm still uncomfortable with process right now, nothing is
No, yeah, yeah, gotcha. All right, so we've got three, so that motion carries. And then, do you wanna continue, Tom, do you wanna move the, the group here, I think?
I'm like, go ahead.
So, sorry, I'm just gonna, I, I didn't mean to, but I think, I know Andy's spent a lot of time, he started with a very large list, and, and so I know in this case, this list is I, I, I think it's a good cross-section of folks in town, and I know you spent a lot of time, there was a, you vetted it down and worked it down, so so I, I, you know, this, this list here is, it seems like, to me, like a good, good cross-section, so.
Yeah, I, I would say that there are a lot of other people that are probably equally as qualified, but certainly knowing most of these people, they are qualified. So I have no problem with this list, you could probably come up with five other lists.
Well, right, it'd be, yeah, you could have alternate lists all day long.
These are all, yeah. Important people in the communities. So I'll make a motion to approve this list, you want me to read them all, or?
I think you, you can if you want, or you can just do it as presented, or whatever, if you wanna do it.
All right, I'll, I'll approve the proposed committee member list as presented for the police chief selection process.
Okay, thank you, Daryl. I'll second that motion. Daryl's gonna second any discussion.
Have they all agreed to this?
Yes.
They've agreed if it was appointed that they'd be willing to serve on that.
Yeah, yeah, so you just say a lot of pre-vetting on it, yeah. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's all, good, all right.
The only other, yeah, aspect of that was to authorize me to execute the contract with main chiefs of police for the search and evaluation.
Um, I was gonna ask you, just that eleven-five, budget-wise, where does that coming out of?
Uh, the operating budget.
Okay.
Carried forward some money with the carry, twenty-five to be able to do this.
Okay, yeah, I can remember, I knew it was in there somewhere, it's in there, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve Andy's signing of the contract for the police selection process.
Okay. All right, that's fine, did they do your second? I did, okay, did I second, any other discussion? Good, okay, all those in favor? Okay, yeah, get that wrong, I'm sure Phil will be excited to get the process going. All right. Okay, let's move along here, we have some liquor licenses and entertainment licenses, so let's get some licenses out of the way, I think we're gonna start with schooner landing, right, twenty-seven? Page from the seven there, I think the page is right. Good to see, yeah, see them up and running again, they've been quite busy, I, I think everybody has been, I've been talking to several places, you know, restaurants downtown and
Judging by the traffic there.
But he's been, been really, really busy, yeah. Awesome, so, all right, so this is for schooner landings, liquor license, everything's in order, Andy, right, didn't look like
As far as I know.
Now they do the process online with state of Maine, so it's pretty, pretty simple, so I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for schooner landing. All right, I have a second to that motion? You second, Daryl?
Yes.
Daryl's gonna second, discussion? There are none, all those in favor? Okay, we're that long, and now we have two entertainment licenses, we have one for schooner landing, and Coco's Sandwich Shop, which we just had the public hearing on, so, is there any issues with any of those, anybody have any questions on them? Are they good? Those are gonna move both at the same time, can't we, Andy?
Good luck to you, Ken.
Again, I'll, I'll move the entertainment licenses for schooner landing and Coco's. All right, Tom, any discussion? Okay, there are none, all those in favor? All right. And then we have marijuana license renewal for Greenport, we have a rep here, if anybody has any questions, he's hiding in the back there. Yeah.
My cousin hide.
Yeah, I see him back there, yeah. Looks like everything's in order, there's no issues there, right? All right, well, let's move that one along, I'll move the marijuana license renewal for Greenports, let me get it right, Greenport. That's the name of the thing, right, it's Greenport Cannabis, right, and Greenport Cannabis, make sure I say it, Greenport Cannabis. Yeah, you second?
Second.
All right, I saw Dan throw his hand up, but I heard you, I saw the hand go up first. All right, you got the last one, I give it to Andrea, I give that, I heard Andrea, so. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're good, all right, Mark, you're set, Marty, you do anything, but he got back or anything, Andy?
He just needs us to fill out the local form and sign the state document, you, you submitted the payment yet?
I didn't.
Okay, and so we'll, we'll swap, yeah, we'll swap the papers for the, for the check when it comes, when he's ready, and that'll be, like, maybe Monday?
Sure, that's fine.
The, the notes, okay, timing goes?
I think it's fired on the twentieth, sir. Or maybe it's getting through.
Yeah, the local one was issued at eight twenty-one, so I mean, you're okay, it's, it's local approval.
Yeah.
And then we have to submit the state, you did that in May, I think, to the state.
Correct, that's how.
Then we'll send, we'll send our local one to them, I think, when it's
Awesome. All right, I think, yeah, comprehensive plan information committee formation, I saw it's long, long titles now.
See now, from about the order, I just
That's why I remember again, I was just gonna, so back to page nine, we're gonna bounce that away, but folks That's what threw me off a little bit, it's like, I know these are somewhat in order, but so this is, yeah, this is something we, we've talked about on and off with the with the comp plan being put in place, and then how we actually get things started and get things moving, so and do you wanna touch base on any? I see Michael's here as well, so.
Yeah, I don't know if it's Michael, if you wanna come to the table, in case there's any questions, Michael had prepared, what's in the pack, pages ten through fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's very well done.
And that was just kind of pulling together what, you know, kind of is maybe its best practice, or what other places have done, that we looked at its models, and until Michael pulled that together, the memo reflects his, his work in that, and then page sixteen starts a like drafted as kind of that backing document, if you will, forming document for the committee, and if there was any questions on any of those or suggestions from the board, and to discuss those, but otherwise, we're hoping that that kind of gives some good rounding for those that would like to serve on that committee.
I think it's all done very well.
Michael, do you wanna do, do you wanna have him do a quick recap? Does anybody listening or anything say this, why, why this is going, this is consideration, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, I guess, following the drafting, adopting of the comprehensive plan, that whole process, now we need to do it all, so implement it, right? So what I, and there's a lot in there, and I, I think that the conversations that I've had with Andy and that I've had with other people is kind of how to structure this, so that the, the select board, the electeds, you all basically are really the responsible for everything in, in the town, so to speak. And how to create another body that can basically help you all and not try and go above, underneath, around, how does that relationship gonna work? And so that's where a lot of this thinking went into, a lot of other communities have I think, compared to Dever Scotta, there's a lot of other communities that have either the kind of big cities that have a lot of resources, and they basically take on all of this implementation in-house, or a lot of it anyway, and then there are some communities that are essentially all volunteer, maybe it's just a three-person select board and, you know, they rely a lot on, on volunteers, and they have almost no internal capacity, and so I think Dever Scotta is actually like in a little bit of an interesting place, and this will be we talked about, we do have some internal structure and capacity, but not enough to implement the entire comprehensive plan. Nor do I think that that's probably best practice, the community put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think that involving the community is probably the, the best way. But all of that being said, I think that what, what is in here is, is some considerations around how big a committee should be, how you all might formally charge this group with responsibilities, what their role might be, how it might relate to you and other boards, entities, staff. So I think what we, you know, what I had put together was, was kind of big picture food for thought, and then after discussing the vanity, we thought, you know, it might be good if we made some kind of recommendation, which you can discard a doubtful art, you know, hold completely, or anything in between. So I guess, and I'm happy to go through, or Andy, if you wanna direct kind of the, so, I started with what the point of it is, some general overview about the comprehensive plan for you and anybody else that is, is at home that's interested. And then I think kind of the, the meat of this is, what kind of board do, or what kind of committee do we want, how many people on it and who should be on it? And then the orientation and alignment, the committee structure, how it's gonna function, some of that can be dealt with once there is a committee, they can figure out how to
All the form, yeah.
You can tell them how often you want, for me, there's, there's a lot of flexibility in, in all of this, obviously. So I think, I think one of the other key aspects here is identifying some, like, key partners that, Dever Scotta has a lot of organizations that are either based here or very active here, but I think the town should try and leverage to implement a lot of this, and so I, you know, we, I, we started identifying some that at least I know about. Imagine you all, will there have others that you know of or Um, imagine you all, will there have others that you know of or, right, you know, would wanna to, uh, engage with, but. This is, so this is.
It looks good, um. One, one issue is we've got two members of the board that participated heavily in the, the planning process. So unless they wanna arm wrestle, or one has more of a disposition for, you know, we have to decide. Andrea and Dan.
Yeah, that's.
Unless we have two members of the select board.
Cause you guys are involved in that, um. Yeah, that's fine.
That's, yeah.
That, the only thing I think since I've drafted this to talk with Michael is, you know, whether or not, when you get to, you know, item four there in the. Committee document on page seventeen, and the membership is, would you want? A member of the planning board and a member of the select board kind of voting, or just kind of there, um, to kind of be the conduit back and forth, um. And help interpret or relay back, um, a more regular and less, the voting kind of member of the committee become two more additional people, like. I know that we didn't include a historic, um, kind of preservation aspect on that list as it was named, and so we may wanna do that as a whole chapter dedicated to that. And we have Historic Preservation Commission, um, so it was only kind of one minor thing, and then it would leave room for either one more kind of major chapter heading to be included. Like there's, um, or just another at-large resident, um, if you made some non-voting members.
Well, what's the modus operandi generally for that, as far as the select board voting?
I, I think it's, um, it's kind of up to you, the, the way that I had originally envisioned it was that the. Select Board, Planning Board, and Historic Preservation Commission as like the, the three, I think the three bodies. That are identified in the. Charter, thank you. Um, would, would at least wanna attend the, the meetings regularly, my thinking was. You all already meet twice a month, the planning board and, I mean, Historic Preservation meet also, but that starts to become a lot if now, we're gonna, if the. Committee wants to meet once a month, at, you know, a certain point, the drafting committee was meeting weekly, so. That's where I think it's kind of up to you all, how, um, how. How involved you are in the actual meetings, and then how information gets back to you, cause that's, I think, is one of the key things that we wanna make sure we establish is. How this information gets back to you, uh, hopefully back to the Budget Committee, you know, back to any of the different bodies that exist that are gonna use it. So if it's that Dan or one of you is, is, uh, the, a regular attendee, or depending on what we're talking about. Um, is a regular attendee, I, I think probably a lot of the work that's gonna happen, some of you may wanna be involved in, um. But the working groups, the sub committees of this, that I don't know, I'm imagining are gonna do a lot of the, the legwork for some of these things.
Right, yeah, like the committee.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, um, I just took that's one, um, you seem to reference Yarmouth, County Yarmouth.
Yeah.
A couple of times, um, just having lived in the Portland area for a long time, Yarmouth had a great reputation as a community, the town manager there was extremely well-regarded. And you can tell that they, they had this planning thing down.
Yeah.
So, um. I, what was their experience in terms of sort of structure, is, is this the model?
I think so, I, I, so, all of my, um, knowledge about Yarmouth came from what was written and what I found basically on it. On a search, so they came up and they had some pretty well worded.
Yeah.
Dot, uh, information that's in here, but, um, you know, I also spoke with Bath, which is a city. Where they have more capacity, um. Topson, which is less, uh, they're not, they're, they're not a city, and I think they're more, so.
Yeah.
Yarmouth looks good on paper.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm glad to hear that that holds up from your experience, but. You know, as far as. The implementation and like the, the details, I, I, I can't speak to it.
Yeah, the other, the other thought, just as I was going through this earlier, is that, you know, when, when we put the plan together. We pulled out what we felt were the most important, um, priorities, and so there was like five or six or seven of them.
Yeah.
And they tended to revolve around housing.
Yeah.
Climate resiliency, you know, these sorts of things, and some active transportation stuff, so. I don't know if you put your thumb on the scale in terms of the composition of the, the membership to those things that we've determined as a group and as a community. To, to be the most important.
I, well, there's nine members, so.
Well, I know, yeah, I know, that's the problem, uh, well, I don't know if nine's a good number or not, but.
Yeah.
Be hard to over, you know, dominate it, I mean, you only get one vote.
I think like one of the things, Michael and one, and I wanted to kind of create this kind of like membership representative list is to make sure that. You know, it's strategically put together, and there's a lot of interested and passionate and good people that have good thoughts, but making sure that we're bringing together a group of people. That can help really steer and can bring some of that profession perhaps, and expertise into the committee's conversation. You know, and I think as we're seeing it, the board's about to undergo a strategic planning process, it's gonna pull in the priorities of the comp plan to identify, okay, with what budget we have. For this year, and looking ahead the next two years, here's what we think, representing the community, we can put forward in a budget doc, that, that will then lead our budget conversations. Um, going into next year, um, and so we're hoping that then, there's a lot, so, uh, one of the things Megan, uh. Has been working on her summer intern, uh, is she's gotten all of the comp plan, um, tools. Policies and its strategies, um, into the software that we've won, um, and so that was, I think, a hundred and sixty-eight strategies.
Yeah.
Um, over the period of the next ten years, so, um, she's kind of put in that foundational work for us, um. In September, when Emerson becomes the Island Institute Fellow, that soul, that whole fellowship is geared towards helping. Be a resource to get this implementation going forward in, in the place, and so she'll be a resource for the, for the board, this key planning effort. And hopefully helping us tie and communicate to the public, that connection's a great budget, and, and an increase in, in what it means we're gonna be accomplishing as a result of that. Help draw those connections back to objectives and what we're completing, what we're bringing the public, and so I think there's a disconnect sometimes between what the tax bills. You know, what you're paying and what you're getting for it, so we wanna try and make that connection stronger, so I see this.
Yeah.
Um, in part, you know, this group being a kind of a conduit in the community for speaking to those bigger strategies, bigger priorities, and those bigger needs. Um, in some parts, it's written like they, if we need to make an amendment, we can do that during its life, um, there's gonna be needs to do that, there's gonna be needs to clarify. What was perhaps meant by some of those strategies that were there, where it's just, you know, uh, create more affordable housing. Pretty broad, yeah, so like what was meant, so to help, that could be an art, a resource, a committee that could help us dive in deeper, they could spend some time kind of. Polling or discussing and bring that back to whatever relevant group there is, or strategic plan process to move forward, and.
Yeah.
And that's how we're kind of seeing this group kind of tied back to, so having a group well composed with. Actual experience, hopefully, and still a blend of community.
Yeah, I, I, I like that in your key takeaways to the successful committee, you talked about adaptability, so.
Yeah.
You know, things are gonna change, and, and, and they just do, and they will, as you move farther away from it.
So you think you'd be able to make every meeting, the monthly meeting?
Yeah.
So what's your view on whether or not you should have a vote, to me, you're, you're gonna be.
No, I.
Hearing about.
I don't think so, well, well, the big vote is gonna be at this table anyways, in terms of the actual allocation.
I was gonna throw that too, Dan, is, is, um, during the comp plan, um, you both were on the comp plan, uh, process, so during the comp plan. There were, with, there were, were there internal votes during that comp plan process within group, cause it's not a.
We sort of worked.
Well, yeah, cause I'm trying to think of like the, what, what, you know, the actual, the weight of the vote is not really. Like it's, I, I don't have any problem with, with. Committee member from any other, like a planning board, or anybody being in that committee and. It's gonna eventually go out to.
Yeah.
To, uh, the citizens, taxpayers, and we're gonna vote on something, or if you have things along, so, I think that voice, whoever's in there, it all should be weighted.
Yeah, it really came down to what vote, ever, I mean, it's collaborative, and, and.
And the whole idea of, of these people, these members are, these are the base members, but then you are going to have committees.
Yeah.
Underneath, it's where tons of people can, well, if we have them. And on to help.
Yes.
With whatever the topic is.
But, yeah, uh, exactly, and I think that that's, um, i- in, the way that I'm imagining this is that, that this core group, the committee itself. Is, um, hopefully will be people who may have a, a specific interest, like, um. If there's somebody from the planning board that has an interest in land use and, and planning and, and, you know, that world, but. You may need to come back to the whole group and understand, um, and keep in contact, that bigger context that we're also talking about. And other things, or economic development and other things that are, are related, and so, um. Uh, so that's what this is, i- i- is gonna need to be able to kind of pull back, because then, when, when things, when we do a dive into. Whether it's land use ordinance or whatever else, um, ho- hopefully, we're gonna be pulling in other groups, we're gonna be pulling in, you know, we have. Um, in county, Lincoln County Regional Planning, we've got MCOT, we've got D O T for certain things, so there are a lot of other. Groups that when we do that dive, I don't expect that there's going to be too much controversy in this core group and the conversations. Or there's gonna be contentious votes, there's not really a ton of, um, authority in this group, I don't think. It's really more making recommendations to this board, to the tech, to basically to the board and to the, to the voters.
Much like the comp plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, so, so, yeah, and, and it, and it's, you know, the, like, folks may ask, like, you know, gonna say, okay, well, we're forming another committee. On top of a committee, on top of a committee, but, eh, eh, we, you know, remind folks that we, we, we don't have a full-time plan, you know, Mi- Michael's our. And, and the CEO, and then they pull the town manager, and I mean, our planning department is part-time, Michael. Yeah, with, with, with a lot of work, so, so the, the, the catch is, if you go back to the comp plan from, you know, previous one, you know, th- these get put into place a lot. And then there's, 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 they stagnate, because there's not, the town doesn't, doesn't have the capacity to build it out, so without forming, without putting something together. To facilitate, it just, it just.
Between the Island Institute and.
Yeah.
I mean, you have people that are gonna be helping.
Yeah, no, having the, the Island Institute fellows, I think, I'm, I'm, I have a big expectation.
But this process, this is, you know, this is a long-term process, this is. So this stuff is gonna be, yeah, so that's great, so.
And, and I think the, the other thing to keep in mind is the strategic plan that I know that Andy's talked with you about is. I, I think that's also a big part of what this committee will do, hopefully, is kind of. Keep, maybe act as ballast. For some of these conversations, cause I think that it comes down to, a lot of this is like, what do we spend money on, what do we spend the, the. The town's time on, whatever resources and time that, that the staff have, and whatever else we can pull in, but those conversations around budget. Strategy, focus, you know, but, I mean, it also, it all comes back to, to you all, but obviously, the, the budget committee and the, you know, strategic.
Yeah, all those back to the budget.
Comes together, and this is just hopefully, um, a group of people that have, uh, are particularly well-versed in the comprehensive plan. And understand what other, what the residents, the town kind of at large is. Wants, and can kind of advocate for that, so.
Oh, makes sense.
It, I think it's gonna be a little messy at times, but.
Yeah, it'll take a little bit, that's. New committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's also I made, so.
And just in terms of thing, Tom, for a moment, in terms of wording of things, um, sorry about that. Yeah, there's a couple of things around, use the term town council in here, and I think it's supposed to, should be select board.
Yeah.
And you used it a couple of times.
Did I, okay.
I put this part together.
Okay, Andy. There's at least, there's at least two or three times where town council.
This is just a suggestion here.
Well, it was in, in page sixteen, not that one, not, not, um.
In the, right in the.
Yeah. It's the proposal. It is in there, so, yeah. It's in that one, like on three B, and then. So, it's not a big deal, but it's just.
Well, should we need a?
So right now, um, the request is just, is to get the, um, implementation committee, uh. In motion, correct, and then.
Yeah, it's just, you know, this resonate with the board, so then.
Yeah.
You know. Can start to bring people in, see if they can fill these kind of, you know, particularly in section four, fill those focus areas.
Uh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it looks.
And then we'll, that, and then we'll throw Dan of the bus.
I don't believe it's gonna be that easy. I mean, it's gonna be. It's a, it's a commitment, but I think we have people out there.
You know, in that regard, I think, I, I don't, when I read it, I didn't see that the committee would go through the budget committee. First before the select board, I don't think they should be doing, going simultaneously to both the select board and the budget committee. Generally, if they get through the budget committee and work out the, you know, when they're satisfied, then it comes to the select board.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're all gonna go, go like this, back and forth.
Yeah, I, and, and that's, I don't pretend to, to be the expert on ha- on that process and what the best way. But I just know there's, it. The budget's gonna be a big, a big part of implementation and major consideration, and I think the way that we're kind of thinking, well, maybe it was just with the. Strategic plan, but following the annual town meeting, which hopefully will be a report act, and then there could be some conversation. On the part of the implementation committee, that then can help, uh, inform the budget season. Uh, uh, you know, both staff, budget committee, select board, and then eventually get back to town meeting, and then, you know, kind of keep. Doing it again, I guess the strategic plan is in there somewhere, but.
Yeah, so you envision like an annual report to maybe this group, but the town meeting as well?
Yeah, that's right.
I just think, this is how we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we're kind of lagging here, but we're doing well there, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't. I think, um, engagement's gonna be a big, a really big part of this, and I think that the town meeting is just a good opportunity for engagement.
Yeah, true.
Um, and there'll be other opportunities too, but I think if we set that as a formal, like, every year, the implementation committee gives a presentation to the select board and the public.
Yes.
That's a good, good start.
Yeah, okay, and the, the software we bought into, there is a community-facing kind of transparency piece, that this will be a dashboard that. So one of the things I think this committee's gonna have to probably lean into and help with is kind of identifying those, you know, key performance indicators, those measurables. So that it's not an all or nothing, it's completed, or it wasn't completed, like, to be able to, how are we gonna measure progress on a particular strategy? You know, not, we didn't get that far in the weeds in the comp plan creation, and so, um, some of it's obvious, some of it might not be obvious, like, how do you wanna measure and show the community? We're working towards it, you know, break down that strategy and steps, basically, and so there's gonna be some work involved in, in that, so we can put that into the software. So people can track that, I think there's one in there right now that's shown as complete, the flood wall, um, we've shown it's complete, cause we've bought it. But everything else is, is zero percentage. Also, once, once we get that, we're still going through the, um, onboarding piece with that software, so I think, we're thinking by November, I believe, which lines up pretty well with the. Strategic plan process too, um, by the end of this year, we should have that dashboard available for the community to look at, and hopefully have some of this stuff put in there.
Great, yeah, so, Andy, what, what can you think would be the most productive to come out of this? And maybe it's out of another, another meeting, but formally. Uh, free have the, the board career, actual committee, we could probably do that now. You know, define a purpose and a directive, and kind of how many members.
We can, um, we can form a committee, um, I think, you make a motion to get the committee rolling, and then, uh, you know, if, if you have. Cause, you know, like Dan mentioned, there, there's some, you know, thi- this is a draft.
Yeah.
Right, that could be approved, we, so we can form a committee, and then you guys hash it out and get a shortlist or whatever you need to do, and then we can come back and say, like, okay, we've got the. Here's the, the documents, and here's the folks on it, and then we could, we can move that document or whatever, so, I mean, tonight it just, it's a formal.
Form the committee.
Yeah, you know, just form, you know, get the, get the implementation going, so, yeah, I'm sure Dan, you probably wanna take that motion.
You want me to take? One of their first tasks could be like, coming up with the, the finalized, uh, well, yeah, however, I'm diverse, so, yeah, yeah, I, I, I figured you want. This is your motion on page nine, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I told you, see, Andy threw us for a, a loop here, he moved stuff around there, all of that, so.
Yeah, alright, I'll make a motion to create the comprehensive plan for the committee. Alright, I'll second, any more discussion? And there are none of those in favor?
I guess it's great, guys.
Yeah.
So I guess we can find, come back with maybe some potential members that you'll open up only, uh, maybe, uh. I, I think we, we discussed. I I think we we discussed at least in here, it's like seven or nine members. I think if you get beyond nine, it starts to become a big.
Now I second Tom for Dan's appointment, because you've got, um, yeah, you and I, there are no highway and barn stuff and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, put him from the board and then whatever, yeah.
Okay, and then um I figure a lot of like the admin, um. No bylaw stuff can be dealt with by the committee with maybe your approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they decide, you know.
Document or something.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so then we'll um, we'll come back.
And so it will be up to you guys to come up with a. The list of who you think, after you've spoken to them.
Yeah.
Got a commitment like. To be on board, like from from Coastal Rivers or whatever.
Yeah, right.
Got a short list in his head, probably is it, yeah.
Well, I think probably my thinking is. Really, it's probably more than these organizations wanna be involved, and we should, we can say. Who from your organization?
Someone from there might wanna be on.
Exactly, so. Um, but I guess we'll come back with some details, you know, a specific mission. And just some kind of more structure and then we'll put it all.
Are you hanging out? Is he hanging out for anything under the discussion items?
Um, he may, he may not.
I didn't know, I just didn't wanna, yeah. Okay, we should, we should really get through, yeah, we'll pursue stuff, what we can here. Um, so um.
Page nineteen is the next one.
Yeah, page nineteen. I marked them this time, I was. Yes, doors, just so, um, yeah, I saw the, yeah, I got the.
Yeah, we choked on.
You need to fix that door.
Yeah, Daryl's in this business and the facilities he manages, I don't know if these numbers seem on par, or I thought one of them was just.
One replacement I did, one door.
Yeah.
Replacement. Um, did you ever hear about Newport last? Or did they reach out to Newport?
Not sure if you did or not.
I can't, I'm trying to recall, they were they were in the, they were in the the right financial spot for them. Um, but they were great to work with, really good.
Yeah, I know P D Qs, I mean, I thought they were typically like commercial red doors, I didn't. We were both, John and I were both surprised when they were like, yeah, we can do these too. I mean, to be able to get the double door, what we do, that's handicap accessible, and the staff door, um, replaced for. Hundred twelve grand without without finding other, I mean, as we're on the motion, I am recommending, we did carry over ten thousand. Because we didn't get it done last year, I'm recommending up to another three thousand dollars from the reserve. And so that gives us thirteen, a little bit to work with if we get into the wall there and find there's something else beyond that needs to happen, that there's a little bit of a cushion there to work with.
That never happens.
That always happens. And how many times we come back, we need more money, we need more money.
So hoping that that'll be enough.
Was definitely, um.
Yeah, they were. Now it's gonna be done, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize town manager to execute the contract um with P D Q door. To replace the doors in the municipal building as quoted and to authorize the use of up to three thousand dollars from municipal billing reserve.
Second.
Right, thank you, Andrea. Any discussion? Yeah, all those in favor? All right, let's get those two, they give you timeframe, Andy?
Uh, not that I'm aware, John did coordinated and talked to them.
Okay, but I'll. Oh, you talked to Chris, yeah, okay, out of out of what's path, yeah. But I, we deal with him too, so yeah, goodness, they, I know they're super busy, but hopefully they'll, they've got something planned to get it done, so. All right, great. All right, let's get up to page forty nine. Carry forward. Yeah, with the care most of this one is for our audit services and for. Last business of the year, and so progress payment on that. Cheryl's recommending that we pull the money from F Y twenty five for the F Y twenty five audit, the carry forward.
Have we already, we just approved or received the the twenty three audit. Um, and so have we already paid for the twenty four as well?
Um, probably.
Kind of skip to the twenty five, right?
So probably some of this, we haven't not completed, so there's no final payment yet, but there's usually something we put up front to.
Okay.
Get them going, they've, you know, Cheryl's already, I believe, started, she's got a file already to send to them if they haven't asked for it yet.
Twenty four.
Yeah, um, so I think. Maybe that, it may be that we end up into a similar situation, um, potentially, I mean, they they need to get the schools finished before. They can do that blended audit report, and that's what the holdup for us was, was kind of waiting for the schools to finish, um. And hopefully twenty four's audit year goes a little bit quicker.
Do you know how the school audit is going?
I do not.
That's yeah, it's usually a holdup too between that, and then there's only so many places that are doing municipal audits, right?
Yeah, we use, actually, each have a different auditing firm doing the books for the two entities, so. In the past, I know I've worked in violently even before, it was the same auditor doing the school and the town, so it's like already in-house, already had all that stuff. I don't think there's a communication issue between the firms, it's just a matter of being able to get through the. However, many budgets they have to work with, the certain was nine.
In total?
So nine of the books.
Um, so your carryover uh is your request are pressing the five thousand three hundred and seventy five, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And that's gonna come, so that's carryover out of.
Admin.
Admin, so it's just carried over out of admin.
And I think that one should have brought it with me. There was a thing, it's still like a thirty, almost a thirty, twenty five or thirty thousand dollar, I think, unspent after the last carry forward was considered.
Okay.
So there's room in that budget to be able to work.
I'll move, uh. Five, the carry forward request of five thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars for um audit work.
Hold me a second. All right, any other discussion on that one? And all those in favor? All right, yeah, sorry, it's you. Off track, trying to think of where the audits are, like we just, the twenty three.
Yeah.
Holy moly.
Do you do twenty four and do you do twenty five and we're in twenty six?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, how do you get, you know, you get snapshots of, you know. You hope you're currently. Yeah, it's tricky. All right, uh, let's move along here, we have cemetery deeds and the perpetual care contracts, the whole pile of them, don't I?
So one family.
Families. Yeah, on the agenda there, I combined it, there are lots, eleven fourteen through eleven seventeen, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Those separately as um cemetery lots and then perpetual care lots.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, because I usually get. Push stuff in these where you have to do them twice, you have to do the the deed and the perpetual care or whatnot, so. Um, yeah. All right, I'll um. I'll move the cemetery deeds, uh, we did right off of here, Libby Hillside Cemetery lots, uh, one, 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 four through one, 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 seven. Second thing, and that's the end there, seconds, any discussion on those?
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, how, when was the last time we looked at how much we charge for the perpetual care?
Um, I think the trustees look at it almost every year.
Okay, I mean, the trustees, the cemetery trustee, yeah.
Cemetery trustee, yeah.
Of which there's still an opening.
I was gonna say. Yes, there is.
Two members now, right?
Do you know when the last time they actually changed that amount?
I do not.
Because the town still kicks in for the for the maintenance of the cemetery as well, in addition to whatever comes out of the perpetual. I assume it's an endowment of some sort.
Um, yes, I believe the statute set up the monies for perpetual care. Going to the trust, oftentimes your loss sales end up there as well. Um, in theory, it's a big enough endowment, if you will, or trust fund that. It may be able to provide off the interest of monies for the upkeep and I don't know if there's cemeteries out there that actually have that balance to do.
Right.
You can't use the principal on the perpetual care, you have to use the interest.
Right, so I was just curious, because, because it seems like a great deal for for folks, so.
Maybe we'll church, you know, an update on. Finances is something I just to, I would, I was curious, I speak, you know, one of the things that is is seems to, so it's. Seems to be managed well and runs, kind of runs its course, you know, and no hiccups, but it's it was nice to find out, so. Yeah. Right, and so those are the deeds, and then, yeah, we moved and voted on that, right? We're in, we're in, thank you, we're in discussion, so I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, something didn't feel right with that, I was gonna move on, like, I think we missed a step, so, um, and then on the same line, uh, no. I'll move the uh perpetual care contracts for for the same for Libby uh Hillside Cemetery lots, one, 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 four through one, 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 seven. All right, you just got a second, any discussion? None of those in favor? Okay, let's go on. Yeah, and there's still, like Andy mentioned, there's still a a a. Some blaring openings in that position as well, but we very. Lucky to have that Patty there for as long as she was, but we'll find some folks that wanna get involved in that, so plenty of stuff to do, folks. All right, uh, moving along, um, we've got a couple of uh discussion items to. Click into, um. Find out which, I don't know what page we're on here, so uh entertainment, special amusement permit process. Couple things, this was response to. An email, you know, correspondence this week.
Mm-hmm.
And this week, and just kind of advising the board of what's kind of currently in place, and so we have a. Is it's called disturbing the peace ordinance, or is it, it started down, the town started down the process years ago, kinda. I guess it's called codifying their ordinances, so they call it chapter three oh five, and. I mean, it outlines what's on the books, and. And what page are you on again? Sixty, okay. Uh, I lost my place.
This is, I thought this was state.
But this is our, this is our local, okay, um, and then. Page sixty five is the state statute. Relating to deployment for music, dancing and entertainment. And couple of which licenses we just issued tonight for many different establishments. In there, you'll see that the towns have the authority to require a permit. Um, in the case where they do require a permit. Other things need to be met in an ordinance, which we don't currently have.
Okay.
I'll just do that on page sixty six, item eleven, and. It talks about ordinances, regulations must govern, for example, the issuance, suspension of vacation, the class of permits and fees issuance. Um, music, dancing, entertainment, um, under each of those classes, so we don't have anything that kind of regulates. And we've, we've been asking folks to submit those forms on initial and renewal, a public hearing, similar like you would like a licensing. Um, but we don't actually have an ordinance kind of regulating the expectation around. Though, so if there's a concern or a complaint around noise, for example, we. Guess fall back to the disturbing the peace, loitering and disturbing the peace ordinance. Which are no measurables, there's no, um, you know, hard, anything to go out in the field for someone to go out and enforce, it just. It it kind of could be just kind of subjective, and it just makes it a little challenging perhaps to go out with certainty and say, look, you're in violation of this clearly. Um, as I'm just bringing, you know, we need to, if we're gonna continue with the um application process for entertainment. We need to put this into some sort of ordinance.
Yes, so a little bit vague, and also, is there something that prompted this?
Yeah, yes, the communications recently about um one of the venues kind of having some louder late night music.
Okay.
Um, and so it's, you know, particularly kind of beyond the eight o'clock hour, um, okay. There's only like one night now that that does that periodically, it's within the license that's issued from the town, um. And so.
Yeah, just a mood.
Yeah. Um, but just wanted to call attention, like we do need to kind of put.
There's gonna be, gonna have a little bit more in the ordinance, yeah.
In the meantime, we're left to work with the um. The the place that's performing the music and balancing out the concerns of residents or other others. Um, because the way the ordinance is written, again, it's fairly broad, um, in terms of food being impacted, um, yeah. You see there, three oh five dash two, those prohibited conduct and activities.
Yeah, go down to three oh five dash two B, I I that's, I think that's me every day.
The disturbing the peace. Loud unreasonable noise. Yeah, okay, um. Yeah, gotcha, um. And it is, uh, as far as the 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 menu in 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 question or the concern, um. Is it just something that like a conversation we had or whatever, just like?
Started that, I don't think there was any music this Saturday. And I've already talked with Phil about it, and so I think it was next time it happens, we're gonna have someone just else also observe. And be able to understand.
Yeah.
Say on a scale of one to ten, ten being the loudest, one being the quietest, you know, where do you think the speaker volume is at right now?
Yeah.
Kind of thing, and just kind of start with that, because we don't have anything that kind of measures.
It should be.
If, what is it, right?
Yeah, how far from where the source of the sound is, you know, do you do something like that? We have nothing right now, other than this ordinance kind of guiding that.
And it's extremely subjective, yeah, the the, yeah, but. Unreasonable noise is hard to, yeah, where do you measure from, so the the hope would be, yeah, that that, you know, yes, we we need to follow the state statute, but that. There could be a conversation you had and, you know, self-awareness and, and, so you're like, hey. Let's turn the bomb that notch. Gotcha. Yeah, okay, okay.
More, if it's okay to jump in.
Yeah, come on, come on up, yeah, we can catch you on this, this, yeah, wait, yeah, state name again and all.
Okay, Carol Foreman, um, so a part of the problem is also positioning, you know, so the, you know, the the. The decibel level is one thing, and yeah, certainly, it's it's, you know, that could be set and. And such, but it's also, you know, where are the, where is the music being performed, where are the speakers being positioned? So in this particular case, um, it's being set in the a side area where there's no building blocking it. And so the music is going straight back basically onto our deck, you know, it could be improved. If it will relocate it to a different spot in front of the building where there would be, you know, barriers, so it's it's that sort of thing. But I would say as far as a permitting process, it would be great if there was a process for notifying neighbors within a certain. Area, if it's an outdoor permit and giving people an opportunity to know that someone has applied for a permit. For music for these types of hours and have it in, you know, a chance to give some input, because like, you know, tonight Coco's. Had, there was a chance for a public hearing on it, but unless somebody had happened to come to the agenda to look at what you guys were discussing. You know, and I get that, but when it comes to something that really is going, could impact someone's, you know, quality of life. Um, by giving a music permit to, you know, have a rock band off, basically off of your deck. It'd be great if there was a process for notifying people, you know, within a certain range so that they could. Address that and address any concerns or make suggestions on what either the hours or things. Because, you know, right now we have a situation, and, you know, we love Oyster and pizza, we love music, Ron's a musician. But seven to ten, um, anytime he's having a band, we can't sit outside. Unless we, that's the music we just decided that we're gonna be listening to, and, you know, so. You know, we're, it it it's a matter of how do you find that balance? And it shouldn't, you know, we're not saying don't, there shouldn't be music, we're saying, you know, how do we find that balance? So I would say, if you're redoing the permitting process, do consider somehow letting the affected. Neighbors at least have an opportunity, and then if they, you know, don't, they don't, but.
Yeah, on the initial one, just to clarify, on the initial, like Coco's, um, it was noted, um. On their form, the initial one, we do have to post it in the paper, and it was posted in the paper for a week. You also have to pick up the paper, know that it was gonna be in the paper, or read everything, such a lot in here. You know, and so in an ordinance, it might be that, you know, every property owner within so many feet needs to be notified, um, potentially as part of a process, um. But we do have that on the renewals, um, it is more, you know, not in the paper, it's only on the agenda that's then posted publicly. Um, assuming that there hadn't been any issues, our police department typically will do a review of calls for service at those addresses. When the liquor license or the entertainment licenses come up, um, and provide that to the board. Um, should there have been, had been an outrageous number of calls for service at that location related to unreasonable noise or music kind of thing, or unruly. Or over serving, you know, that might cause the board to. Yeah, um, but it does go through a slightly different layer of public notice at that point. That could be, certainly be clarified in.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Carol, thank you, yeah.
So we don't actually have a noise ordinance.
Well, it's, 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 it falls under the lawyer and disturbing the peace, but it's, you know, it's, it's very open to subjective, so, yeah, so.
Hi, my name's Ron Capps, I live at seventeen Water Street, um, everything Carol just said, you know, we we have dinner tonight, and so I, I agree with everything she said, I just wanna add this, um, we're not anti-fun. We're not anti-music, we're not anti-oyster head, we're not anti, Nick, Nick is a great guy, he brings so much to this community, he's raising his daughter. Right? Oyster pizza is a great value to this town. Best pizza in town. Nick asked me to play on his deck. I'm, I'm a former professional musician. I've performed in town. We're not anti-music. Seven to ten is too damn late. I can't sit on my deck and have dinner and speak to someone at my table in this tone of voice and be heard. I can't sit in my house with the doors and windows closed.
Yeah, yeah.
Without hearing that music.
Yeah.
Nick shouldn't be able to choose the music for my dinner parties.
You, you guys are just down Water Street, right?
We are at seventeen Water Street. Right, right across street.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And they have a house in between them, too.
I mean, part of the problem is the physics of this, the band sits with its back to, to Main Street, and the music goes between the insurance building and it gets canalized.
Yeah, comes right up through.
Which is just what a megaphone does.
Yeah.
And it hits that asphalt and it bounces right up. So it's being compressed and amplified as it comes forward, that's the physics of it. The problem with the ordinance is in one word, unreasonable. I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I'm trying to be very reasonable about this. We've gone to Nick twice. And he says, I'm within the ordinance. And I'm sure he thinks he is, because he's been issued a license for this. I would just say at ten o'clock is too late. Everybody else does seven o'clock. I think that should be the, uh, the standard.
Thank you, Ron. So we do have some stuff to clean up anyway, in the ordinance, and then, um, uh, you had mentioned earlier about, uh, did you, did I hear you wrong, or, um, there's observations, or what, what did, did you you said something about the, 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 when, when the band's playing?
Uh, to be able to just put down, they didn't just say Saturday.
Yeah.
And again, Sundays, he's sometimes we'll go to like, like, seven on Sundays if he does music. Usually is a more of a later night. I think in the winter time, if he does it, it tends to be in the building, and so that I assume is slightly different, um, experience. Um, so, yeah, just, I think we just need to be able to experience a nose. Yeah, the police department, you know, has certainly been able to have good conversations with him, he's pretty reasonable, and so we just needed to see what going on.
Yeah, yeah, just one of those things where it's like, you, you know, you, you, you hate to have to regulate everything, you just want everybody to be, you want a lot of self-awareness.
I know. Yeah, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
We're trying to do this as natives.
Yeah.
We don't talk to him personally, we send him a message. If it's, you know, necessary, we can call the police, but I don't wanna bug the cops.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, and we're, in a second, we'd like to see, you know, it's a small community, like to be able to like, let's figure a workaround, so, okay. Yeah, gotcha, all right. So, yeah, thank you, guys, coming in. So we have some stuff to, yeah, I think it's Danny said, we have some stuff to work on to bring the ordinance up to, uh, the state statute anyway, um, cause there is a lot of a lot of vagueness in there.
Thing, Andy, brought it up, you need to have, um, you need to have the ability to uh, adjust them.
Revocation. Or, or.
Adjustment. You can't do it from ten, seven to ten, you can do it from four to seven. Something like that, you adjust. You know?
Thank you guys for input, yeah.
And this kind of segue is nice into the next discussion item, and, you know, what we had found just today from MMA, we'd asked for some input. Megan had reached out to the legal staff there, and on being that there needs to be an ordinance, if we require the permit process, here's the place, we need to set it in ordinance. Question is, do we need another standalone ordinance, or is it something we could potentially include as a section in the business licensing ordinance? And that was appropriate, that was acceptable, and so with that, and
We could, we could amend the business license.
We don't have ones yet. This is, this is the first time.
Hard to fee, we have to have an ordinance.
Okay, okay.
This is the first time, um, the board is seeing a draft form of what an ordinance can look like around business licensing, this comes on the heels of a discussion. Um, referencing from the budget process, where I proposed, uh, a revenue offset, um, or collection of revenue for this, and even though we didn't have an ordinance, this has been on the board's agenda or strategy or goals list for over ten years to try and create something like this. With Megan's help this summer, and, you know, in her internship, this is one of the pieces that she's been focusing on, um, among a couple others. And so she's put a lot of time into researching what other towns have in place, you know, some good practice. And this is a starting point for a board, um, to kind of say that this is not what we were thinking, or this is on the right track, this is, this helps set us straight internally to make sure we're moving it forward how you see best for the community, and the next steps would be to get your guidance, um, and go back to either working it further, or reapply, or revising it, coming back, and then you know, also being able to reach out to the business community to start having those conversations around why, and, you know, some of the outputs from it. And so this isn't something, this is the first time it's kind of being put out here, it's not intended to be very physical wrestling, well, that, yeah, that, make sure, Megan, are you?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
Somebody in there, yeah. So Megan, uh, was this your genesis, or did you get most of this from some other town? Because it looks, my first blush on it was, it looks like a city kind of ordinance, I mean, it's pretty pretty robust.
Yeah, I, I pulled a lot from a bunch of different towns, also from the state statute, so it's, it's myriad of things just put together.
Yeah, um, you're able, I think you wanna try and screen share your presentation.
Is that good?
Yes. Through what she's worked up for you, just kind of going through this.
Yeah, uh, so as Andy mentioned, it's just really to go over a general framework of business licensing ordinances and to give some potential direction to the board for future reference, and I'm also gonna explain the purpose, um, the ordinance might serve to a town and local businesses. Uh, part of drafting and outline for this ordinance involves looking into what the process other towns use to keep track of local businesses. I found that many towns have an ordinance in place, and some towns like West Casa are in the process of creating one. Uh, there are a couple of reasons why towns see emerging relevance. One is the increase in business activity. As more businesses move into main each year, licensing ordinances help to keep track of which are active, how many have ongoing compliance with state and local regulations, and what environment the business is operating in in case of emergency responses. And on top of a growing need for business registration, the process has been made fairly simple. Uh, software has emerged that fast-tracks the administration, administrative process, connecting the new system with existing data on permits, uh, zoning and taxes, paired with a user interface that is pretty easy for staff and businesses to work with. The overall purpose of the town is also pretty substantial, um, a licensing ordinance plays an important role in filling in filling an existing gap between local businesses and the municipality. It does this by keeping track of the type and number of businesses in town with means for periodic check-ins. It also serves the purpose of monitoring business compliance with town and state regulations and any hazards or security info associated with businesses. And through consistent monitoring, it also ensures that businesses that benefit from town services are equitably assessed and taxed according to state statute. This also comes with the benefits to businesses as well, uh, the new line of communication provides businesses with a stronger sense, stronger connection with town staff and services, and it also allows them to acquire a better understanding of state and local regulations so that they can avoid complications with unmonitored violations. And ensures that all businesses are put on an equal radar so that town services are ready and familiar with each business when I need to be in touch. The scope of the licensing ordinance is pretty broad, um, it addresses all aspects of the licensing process. First, the framework of the ordinance sets out standards that are expected from local businesses, followed by the process for administrative review, um, inspections involved in license approval, the application fee, timing, the decision enforcement of the application procedure, and also specific requirements that help businesses and staff understand their role in the application process. So in this framework, to ensure a business is safe with community and in compliance with existing expectations, department heads would check that all taxes and fees the business owes are paid in full. Uh, their public safety size is sized after you do the report of any recent emergency responses to the facility, um, that their business activity is compliant with the land use ordinance, and any violation of town codes are resolved prior to approval. So to have these standards checked by the appropriate department heads, the general process has the business submit their application online or to the town office, uh, where the CEO will review it and relevant documents for code compliance, to then go to the police chief to sign off on safety compliance, followed by the tax assessor to make sure the taxes are paid, and finally, to the clerk to be approved or denied. Uh, for continued monitoring of these standards, the ordinance tends to express the authority of staff to be able to inspect the business premises as needed to ensure compliance with codes and permits, as well as life safety requirements. Um, with the administrative, administrative process, uh, comes a fee to color, cover relative expenses. Application fees I researched differ across towns, uh, but typically are based on the administrative costs of processing the application. For example, if a public hearing is required, fees would cover the cost of public notice and administration of the hearing, but also have the potential to go back to the business community for ongoing costs. Needs, um, in terms of the application period, uh, staff suggested a timeline when they have the capacity to review a large info of applications, specifically around January to February. In this case, renewals for li- licensed applications would be encouraged to be submitted January first, but meet a deadline in February every year. Um, meanwhile, newer amended licenses could be submitted at any time before being established or amended. However, the license activity could be prevented until the license is issued. And to remind businesses of the renewal deadline, they could be notified either by email or mail. A fast way to initiate this process would simply have businesses revise their previous year's application, only editing it for changes and submitting any new paperwork, such as state licenses and building permits. But these applications then go through the same process as the initial application to ensure continued compliance for approval, but with a relatively quicker administrative process. In the clerk's decision of whether to approve or deny, deny, um, an application, full compliance with the ordinance and town codes could be considered. Also, approval could be given with conditions attributed by town staff, such as subject kink pumping, proceeding approval, or that businesses, such as entertainment businesses, have their license sound shed down a certain time after closing. Uh, not following the guidelines in the ordinance, violation of town codes, or failure to pay taxes typically result in denial of license application. Businesses could then have the option to appeal to the Lincoln's period for, um, certain number of days within the action that they wish to appeal. After approval of a license, continued monitoring enforcement would hold businesses to the agreement and the application. A reminder could be sent to a business if they fail to maintain the status of their license, and if reminder does not result in compliance, a notice of violation could be sent with an order for corrective action and in order to seize the violation. If these measures are not successful, uh, civil penalties may be enforced, potentially leading to a suspension, revocation, and measures to seek an injunction of the activity and violation. Uh, moving into the content of the application, due to a variety of business operations, some ordinances have laid out certain requirements for different businesses. For example, businesses that serve food or alcohol may be required to provide, uh, relevant state licenses. Example of this is an innkeeper's license. Before approval, a life safety inspection might be required to ensure that there are safe means of egress. Um, for their state lodging place license or eating and lodge license could be required to inform the town of which admits state approval. And veri- verification of use for transient occupancy could confirm that the business is land use compliant. Uh, to show this might look like, I pulled an example application from York, which is one of the towns that has license-specific requirements in their ordinance. At the top, you can see fields required for general info, such as the name, address, and owner-manager contact information. The primary contact for the town would be updated with each renewal and provides a quick way to reach out to businesses for certain information. Uh, below that, the type of business is identified, or described by the applicant to get an understanding of what land use the business might fall under. And next, the application provides a place to put in state license information. Then the signature of the applicant to ensure understanding of the requirements, followed by the fee, parcel info, and a place for department heads to sign prior to approval. So this entire process can also be streamlined by software programs specifically tailored for municipal licensing. Um, after reaching out to multiple software companies, I found that there were certain services common to licensing software, such as processing and tracking online payments, sending automatic reminders, providing license certificates, tracking expired licenses, tracking code violations, having inspection updates, showing invoices, storing data including attached files, and also generating regular comprehensive reports on business activity for the board and the public to see. And one unique feature we found with a couple of programs is the GIS parcel map, where the town can view parcel profiles with information from applications, such as buildings with hazardous materials for local police and fire, contact info, land use, and more. Uh, this feature can improve productivity for various department tasks, and it can be made public facing for citizens to use as well. As shown, that filters parcels with a search tool when clicked on, town staff or the public can view the property profile. And I also included a timeline for public approval, um, just to give an idea, a signed special meeting warrant would have to be notified to the public in advance. In this period certification of any final ordinance would be put in the public record, and then copies would be provided to the town office. Uh, overall, the timeline would be expected to be around thirty days after the signing of the warrant article, um, if the final ordinance is approved at a special meeting. And then I just wanted to leave some room for discussion on questions or thoughts people have.
Thank you, Megan, um, that's, well, I'll work to dig into that. I, I'll, if, I'll go for a couple of things, and I, I think, uh, yeah, any time that a new ordinance that's proposed with like a fee attached, I mean, it's, it's, I'll both sides of the coin here, right, the business and, uh, running business for somebody, and it's like, oh, God. I just wanna do business in the town, right, uh, and, and then you look at it from the municipal side and, and see where there are some partnerships, so you kind of have to thread that needle where, like, y- y- you know, what's the, what's the benefit on both sides of it? I, I appreciate the first part of your presentation there that showed some of those benefits, we've had some um, instances where the past, where there was a, we, we still with a community block grant, um, with, um, Jared. I can never remember, but seriously, how that's going for, but, but there was a community block grant that was, that was available, and, and, uh, those are things that, like, if you don't know they're there, and you don't know the business exists, I mean, there are opportunities out there, um, we just had a conversation about the comp plan implementing, you know, and stuff of how things can fit in, so there are definitely some benefits there, and um, it's, I appreciate you bringing up the, the, the both sides of the, the benefits first, you know, what, how would this work? What's, what's, what's beneficial to both, both sides here, so thank you for that. Anybody else, yeah?
I was gonna say, obviously, you did a heck, heck of a lot of research and a lot of work. And take, it seems like you took the best of everybody's, uh, process and put it into one, you know, overall document. And I think my reaction is, you know, we're not walking yet, and, and we're, you're proposing we run, and I think we need to work into this process, but the other thing that's, that scared me a little bit is you're suggesting that, um, this wouldn't be an income-producing, uh, process. Yeah, we have a small staff here, and, you know, I, I don't know if we could ever fulfill what's in there with the work that's involved with our staff. But if it, if we don't end up getting a net profit out of this process, I'm not sure it's meeting the initial intention when we decided to do this.
Well, I think, Tom, to your point too, is like, we, we, we've talked about this for like revisiting, like, the fee schedule and making sure that the the barrier leaks here, um, costs, you know, the costs are covered and yeah, it's, it's hard when you start, you know, I, I, I know, it's the business side throwing around profit, but at the down, but at least these costs are associated, that comes into the fee scheduling and what's reasonable. We saw one up there, one example was, it's always ten bucks.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's great, but you, you, you can't, if somebody takes an hour, you have a staff member taking an hour to process something, it's
Yes, I mean, what I was thinking about is, in, in the comp plan process, one of the issues we came up with was the idea of short-term rentals, Airbnbs, and, and so we, we sort of deferred to, uh, some sort of licensing, business license, uh, process, that's how you get at part of it was to understand who, who's participating, you know, where are the Airbnb people? Um, you know, right now, police don't know, fire doesn't know, you know. You know, right now, police don't know, fire doesn't know, you know, who's in these places. And so just from a fire safety perspective, it seemed like a good way to go. And then there are some communities where it's impacting local housing. And so so I don't know if a business license ordinance could also be used to say we're only gonna have two hundred Airbnb, I don't know what the right number is, but in, in the town, there must got any going time and, and just to, to just because it impacts housing and because you're taking units off the, the rules. And so I don't know if that could be envisioned as part of the business license requirements as well.
Yeah, there's a slot in currently to kind of flag that. That was something Megan heard from Michael and I. As an opportunity to that was not in there yet, of course, what we just talked about entertainment licensing could be included in your, the process for liquor licensing. How we want to handle it, because we don't really have a well-defined process for renewals. And the state kind of just leaves it up to us. I think that's another one we can kind of, we do anyways, we could just include in here, you know, with if, if there's time and, and costs associated with making sure that we expand the public notice, you know, the, the impact to the voters of whatever distance from, like, that's another one that would need to be included. We don't have that outlined yet, and so we could include that. So I think there's a bunch of pieces that we've been talking about that feel fragmented that could come into this. Yeah, if you pull it into one.
Megan, could you check out how much the cost of that program would be to implement it? Computer program that you were talking about?
There was a couple of different price ranges depending on how many modules you, you include. It was around like five thousand to seven thousand for the lower price that we saw.
And that, and that was for multiple, like, one of them was like you can buy into the program, GovPilot or the other one. And there's like a hundred modules you can buy from these companies and they kind of get you like, oh, we're just this little one. Yeah, but there's a need and a desire, you might have recalled during the budget process, Michael was proposing a GIS platform that is public facing, you know, we had it for a minute when we were working with Good Bay Harbor, we don't have it anymore. It's a development tool for people to be able to access. With that, you can put as much or as little information behind the parcels as you want. And so the thought when we looked at, when we had Megan looking at some of these software options is how do they integrate with other needs we've identified we want to have either as a future or want to implement now, and what can be added on perhaps as we get comfortable, what we know, kind of taking bite sizes. And what can be added to the website, we have the platforms that they offer, some of these types of modules. So we just try to get a sense of what the numbers were, and none of them were frankly too scary in the sense of what, what could this program generate at water mountain? The number of businesses we believe if this team being about three hundred. You know, we could work with that number to cover our staff time, the supposed program costs for implementation and try and make money available in some regard potentially for the outreach and, and support of some form, and that kind of needs to fleshed out still. We, one of the things that Megan was helping us with, she put together a survey to kind of query business owners. And, and Rundle with the Chamber. We've hosted one so far, we want to do two or three more. Meetings, forums, community forums, town hall type things with business community to understand, you know, what is it the town could be offering and providing, what is it, what's working well, what's not working well. Chambers interested in that information, Twin Villages Alliance is interested in that information. So we've had one so far.
How did it go?
Good input, good more people.
I would surprise was good input.
Could have been more people, but parking, of course, resonated at this time of year, it's going to. We tried to, we tried to force the winner perspective on, on those that were in attendance and what they were called. And so we, we do need to have a few more of those. And I think what we hear from that in terms of what business, we don't necessarily know what businesses would like to have support with or, or boards always usually applauding that well or it didn't go well, or the parking's not enough.
Did you let us know when you're doing that?
The twentieth of August will be the next one we're gonna, and we're kind of targeting, I'm sure because there are so many businesses in the community, we're kind of trying to select areas of town to invite those businesses in, just so we don't have a room with potentially come to do that. Conversations, we'll have a multiple of them. It'll be here, likely at eight, we don't have it advertised right now. And we should probably, if, if, if board members want to go maybe sort of avoid a quorum and then maybe we could rotate out, because it sounded like something, you know, at least have a board representative. There was somebody there to listen or whatever. So if anybody's, yeah, who's interested, just let any of them know. Somebody wants to attend one or the next one or whatever, we can rotate out or something.
Yeah, it was a tough time of year for the business community to take time to do another type of thing. And that's where, you know, Megan having a chance to create that survey helps, I mean, they can at least provide some input and you know, maybe this becomes somewhat of a recurring type thing that we're able to do.
No, it's, it's, it's great, and because there has been, I mean, I've, I think we've all heard it, I've heard it, and there's been a kind of a, a rather vague request that the town should do more and, and getting to the meat of that, like, what is that more? What's that line between? What is your municipality required to do or want to do and then, and what's, and when you get into licensing ordinance and traps, like, there's always, there's costs associated. So as you step things up and, and need to do more, well, you've got to cover costs, any staff time. I mean, potentially a, a staff member coming on board, you know, there's a lot of costs that can happen, so.
You have to look at the net benefit to both parties. Because you impose a process and a, a fee and a cost on the city's side, you know, what is being accomplished? I really have to focus on that.
Yeah, great.
Need to have the weigh-in of the people.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, definitely, or it's not gonna work. So if we don't have the people you know, participating, then
But definitely, we need something. We, we, we're, we're in the dark ages, I think, to the large degree. But on the other hand, there's towns like Bristol and some of the surrounding towns, they don't have any ordinances either along these lines. So we don't, you know, you can't go to a hundred miles an hour from going five miles.
But they're also not town centers either.
Yeah.
Bending ordinance, vending can come in that.
I think that's an example of an ordinance that we could consider asking the voters if the board wanted to, to dissolve that ordinance as it is basically and incorporate what we're vending as a license within business license.
It's a terrible order.
Way it's written is a little unclunky, but also written long enough ago that I don't know if it still resonates with the business and community the way.
No, I, I, I think you're right, and I don't think, I think when it was written, it was written for a specific purpose and it allowed the board way too much power, so to speak, to, you know, and there's things that would, like, we're not, you know, the slipper doesn't determine what's safe and what isn't, like, the, the very divagacy of it is just, yeah.
They have to serve hot dogs, you know.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, it's, it's, you know, it's a paragraph long ordinance, it's like, oh, that's dangerous. Ah, I, I, I think this is a great draft, there's a lot of work into it, yeah, a lot of work into this draft, and I, I, I think, you know, this, this has been a great presentation for Megan to get into, because it really is, it's gonna be, you're gonna have a lot of questions and pushback on this, you gotta, because folks are, again, like, I'm looking for both sides of the, of, you know, two, two sides of the coin here is like, oh, great, another imposing another fee and other schedule, you know, another process.
Would be apolitical, which is, would be to start with an inventory of all the businesses.
Well, and that's the trouble is you don't really have it, right?
I, I've attempted that last year when, and then we sent out the, the assessor sent out the notices to try and get everyone included in our personal property tax list.
Right, and we get.
And that's how I know that there's about three hundred. Now, I don't know all of them, because not everyone advertises, you know, and there's a range of are we looking at sole proprietors or home-based businesses as they're allowed to be permitted? Do we only look at, you know, buildings over a certain size? Is the structure for fee, and that's way in the weeds, but you know, I think what we're open today, at least to understand, like, is the breadth of what's here? This, this is a pretty detailed breakdown of looking at specific businesses perhaps and having standards for certain ones or expectations for certain ones. Or do we want to start with more kind of like a, a, a basic licensing type situation where it's like, we just need to know who you are, well, we may improve this over time. And that could also be challenging to later increase that. So I think we're just trying to get a good balance and understanding from the board of like, you know, are we on?
It has to be evolutionary. I mean, no, we're not, we can't take us out of context of this whole area. I mean, we you know, I think imposing that like slam dunk initially would be a shock to the system.
What, what's?
Why don't we get anyone saying that we're gonna do that?
No, no, I know. The first meeting you've had and, and then the follow-up meetings with, with the, the business folks or whatnot. Has, has this been broached at all, whether it was part of the conversation? Like, is it, it just, I, I think it's something that I don't know how you, I don't say get ahead of, but, but there's a selling point to it, right? To, to kind of get ahead of, say, like, we're looking into this because there's several reasons because of this. And I know part of it is you, you look at, and I the personal property side there, right? Which, you know, again, drives me nuts. I know it's state statute, I know it's there. We'll have to change it somewhere else, but it is what it is. But it's not applied equally. There's business that we know and don't, so you do have a tax burden on some that are offsetting for, for them. So I understand that, I don't, I don't, I don't like it, but I understand that. So that's part of it, you know, that's, that's, that's a section of it, looking at, like, hey, you know, this is, this is, we know, this can be applied equally, but somehow getting, getting ahead of it with those, even with those the, the meeting schedule coming up is like, the conversation is gonna get out there, let's, let's have it ahead of time, say, we're what do you think about this? We're looking into this, and this is why. Because again, those are folks are asking the town, like, what, what can we do more? What are we missing? And at the same time, say, okay, we can do that, but this is what we're thinking, this is a way we can do it. And, and what do you guys think about that?
Part of, part of it comes from state statutes about safety. So you could say, look, we're trying to get an inventory because there are state and even local and town concerns about safety, so we need to inventory all the businesses, what they do, what their equipment is, having a safety inspection, whatever, so you start that.
Yeah, there's a public safety aspect to it, absolutely.
Absolutely, for both the police and the fire department.
Yeah, they need knowings out there.
Yeah, the police department already has, and it was recently updated to some degree, just contact information for business locations. So that when an alarm's going off or something looks out of place, the officer on duty that's doing property checks. Because yes, we are involved in the community and are, and notice things differently than other agencies might. They can call. I know there was one for a couple of weeks ago, there was just on a regular tour of the town, you know, I heard it on the scanner that they called in and said, I'm, I'm going into a building, you know, the door was ajar, Saturday night, Friday night, Saturday night. You know, but a business had a door open, and so that caught them, they knew that was out of place. And then went in, and so they're able now to like, look up in the contact list, however they look at it, reach out to the person directly, as opposed to just talking to dispatch, who probably won't have a phone number for that person. You know, so there's that benefit for the community by just knowing who to contact. When a place is falling off of a building owned by someone whose tenants aren't responsible for maintenance, who are we, you know, how do we know who to call?
We have a mailing out, so that's it.
So would the GIS system also say, okay, this is the business, and so you can, so when a call comes in or there's an issue, they can just like, like, point to a, a map, a GIS interactive map and say, oh, this is this business, this is who's in there. Oh, they, they rent Airbnb, oh, there's three apartments in there. And, and, and so that would be helpful, and you would think to, you know, police and to, to fire to know, you know,
right?
What's there?
Yeah, right, police, fire, EMS, yeah.
I know Fire Chief was asking about the concern, the increasing concern over stored energy. Now, whether it's a, you know, you know, hearing about EV fires or e-bike, e-bike batteries igniting or or, or tools, or thinking about home, home battery systems, you know, if you're charging, you have solar panels and you want to charge battery banks to provide power for your home, you know, the fire danger is, we're still learning how to contend and, and deal with them. They've done great, learn more about the EV vehicle fires, but you all of a sudden put these stored systems into a residential structure, we don't even know. So if you're responding to a a fire alarm or a fire call at a house, you know, the, the department's heading in, not knowing some of the stuff. And so at least on the business aspect, you know, there's a boat builder in town that has EV motors. Now, how they store those, I mean, our fire chief is aware of, so, but others out there, we don't have a clue sometimes that some of the stuff goes in. There's no permit required, we're not suggesting there'd be a requirement, but this might be on the commercial aspect, an opportunity to learn about hazardous materials we don't know about or stored power in facilities, and just to put that on a map so that they might have opportunity to access it.
I think that's an excellent first step, but also recognize that's gonna be a lot of work. So that, that in itself, doing that on a townwide basis, it takes you time.
Last word, and some of the software Megan's found, some of those, you know, they fill out that permit form and it's not duplicative. And so if we can launch a software, cloud-based or web-based solution that the applicant's gonna fill it out either way. If they can start with it in the program and the program can populate a GIS map. Flag the things that aren't filled out or we need more information on, that's gonna help staff in the review, because three hundred, even on a renewal basis, is gonna be a lot to go through. So some of those systems can flag and things are missing or aren't, aren't.
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be streamlined, it needs to be easy. It's, it's, you know, we don't want to make
And we have the computer systems to do it for us.
So it's a great.
You gotta purchase programs. Very expensive. How much it would take people to do it? You know, on time, I mean.
Megan, do you have anything else to, to add or any comments there?
Uh, no, I think that was it actually. Thank you for listening.
Good presentation.
I was gonna ask, what are you, what are you doing in your spare time if you, I mean, this didn't take very long to put this together.
Oh, yeah, just a couple of things.
Thank you, thank you. Well, so you're supposed to move along. I did forget, Andy had proposed in addition to the official action items, and we kind of moved ahead and and got bouncing around here, so is this something you want to tackle?
I'd like to be able to
Let's rip the Band-Aid off, get it done.
So I shared just a quick memo overview of what we're proposing, the next few pages is what I sent out to a few I had four companies that I sent to for engineering kind of services, survey services. Gargle Endorski, Sewell, Tated Howard, who the Sanford District uses for their work, and Healy Ward. Who's helping right now with the YMCA and the childcare, environmental review, hopefully it must help them. And so companies that I knew were kind of in it, that we've been working with, that were familiar with the area. I didn't put a full RFP out, just blasted it out there. I didn't think the they came back pretty close to what I was expecting for a price range. We only had two of the four respond. And the issues we have, if you're not familiar, Chapman Street, there's two sizable discharges for stormwater collection that go into Chapman Street, one's down by the tin building there behind the lumberyard. And the other one's up a little ways closer to the Historical Society, I think two.
Right.
One property down, and it's on the second property down from there. They both, and I kind of have it on a map, not color map, but a map there kind of showing where those come off of Chapman Street. The, the connection between those kind of laterals off of Chapman Street run along. It's a filled ditch line, there's no barn, can't quite see in the shadows of the trees there. To the left of that, that metal building. After the right of the metal building, rather, as you look at it. It's got about probably a foot and a half or two feet of water up on the walls of the wall. So it's an indication that when it was built, it probably was in dry ground. I know that's, that's historically a western area. But the challenge is if we're unable to flow water from the back end of Hilltop Stop, it starts up there, it's an open ditch, goes down. Finds its way ever so casually around the back of that metal building, and then eventually into
Your backyard.
No, it stays in the Chapman Street and goes eventually out into Daysco, one of the main street. But the water doesn't flow, it just sits in there. It's impacting some of those properties. We needed to function to get water away from our roads and out of our catch basins, as it's designed to do. And the town did put a significant amount of time and money into part of Chapman Street, from the Historical Society down to the tin building. And with curbs and catch basins. And then it's a matter of connecting that drainage ditch system, I think we should probably, well, let's see what the engineers would suggest, but thought would connect that ditch system instead of having a snake in behind that building and then back into the ditch, just tap, if we can, tap right into that basin at the bottom of that hill. And then, so having that surveyed, I mean, without having public interest, other than we know it needs to function, like, we don't have any easement out through there that I'm, that I could find. And so the proposal started with a survey of the drainage area, getting the meets and bounds of what a drainage easement would be. And then having them design the solution for, and, and kind of put together those bid specifications that we could put out, help with any permitting that we would need to do. And then we can probably take care of it from there.
Doesn't say permitting in here.
I didn't have it, they put it in theirs, knowing that that's what we need to do in our proposals, both include that aspect of it. And so the price range is pretty close, the timeframe is pretty close between the two of them. Gargle Endorski, we've been doing a fair amount of work with recently, both have surveyed the areas for other people.
I was gonna ask, Gargle Endorski, I can't remember what, they were involved in something on Elm Street or, or Chapman or Church Street, I'm trying, they
They helped Hodgson.
It was Hodgson recently.
Hodgson goes out through there.
Yeah, yeah, but before, in recent, but I thought before.
Yeah, yeah, but before in recent, but I thought before, going back a little ways.
They may have, I think it was Wright Pierce that helped with, they got the. Office.
I was trying to hold Miles Street.
Yeah.
I was trying to remember they had, you know, go back, but anyway.
As far as like the survey work, I think both companies have an advantage on that aspect of it and. Um, they both had some surveying work for different properties back through there.
Okay.
Um. So looking for approval from the board to utilize money from the paving and drainage reserve and to be able to get this. This is step of the work down, whether we can proceed with, they'll give us a cost, a probable cost of construction, you know, through this presumably and we'll get a sense of whether we can. Pull the trigger and post it or whether it'll be next, it'll likely be next budget year anyways, by the time we get everything done and permitting and. Or it may be limited. I think Gartley and Dorsky had noted that we might plan for a late summer or fall next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so we just needed to line up the budget. I'm a little nervous about that cost. Let them come back at, given the challenges of.
Yeah, yeah, this can be tricky. It's, yeah, there's there's access challenges. There's a lot of, yeah, and you're working in all wetland. There's. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what the. Permit process and D E P requirements and all that are going to be, right? Yeah, but it it, yeah, you don't know until you until you look into it, so, okay.
Um, yeah, no, it's, anybody have any questions or anyone else? Does it make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll uh, I'll just read his motion off here then, so um. I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to commit to the proposed scope of work with Gartley and Dorsky as quoted and to authorize the use of up to thirty-two thousand dollars. From the paving and drainage preserve. Sorry, I'm going to second that. I think Tom seconded that down there. Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor? All right, no blame the small. Um, we're gonna go, we've got an executive session to move into um if uh in a in a minute um. I was gonna do a real quick uh recap on the uh public works, stuff that we've been to a couple of meetings if it was, I'll keep it. Pretty pretty brief.
Yeah.
So I know we haven't had an update on it and um so uh uh with the um backup a little bit, the uh proposed. Um. Idea between uh looking at a joint public works program between Newcastle and and Dan Rescata um. Been some questions out in the field, you know, some folks have asked like, what is that? You know, what are we doing? What's going on? How much is it going to cost? So. Uh, very early stages of this, we've had a, we've had two meetings with the um. Committee, so to speak, um, which is uh Andy Dorr and and Kevin, oh my God, I just forgot Kevin's last name. Don't tell him I said that, but I know we're on on video uh with 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 Kevin from Newcastle um uh uh. Rufus Percy and uh uh Tom Costner, Tom's name, I myself and and Andrea and then um Paul Brown as as a consultant. Um, and it's been a really, yeah, it's been interesting. We're starting with um, you know, I want to caution people that are asking like. There's nothing set in stone right now. I I the idea behind this is is looking into, is there a potential cost savings? For one town, two town, both towns. It's going to work for both towns. So um very, very early stage of this and and we left. The 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 first meeting we had was just kind of a more or less a meet and greet and kind of figure things out and and uh the consultant Paul Brown brought some information in what we should think about. The last meeting was, what, last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, last week.
Yeah.
And um we we kind of focused on um. Looking at a possibility of a department, you know, where does this start? And the recommendations were, you know, you look at your um your snow removal. And currently, we're one point two million between the two towns, four contracts. Um, annually between the two towns that we we, you know, we output for for snow removal. So we're looking at that. It's like, okay, that's your, that's your big cost center. And and um the 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 exercise was to look at uh. You you know, what what are your standards? What are you expecting? What are your standards? And it was interesting, the the good, good back and forth with like. What we're used to and what you can do and how you can do it. So we got some good input there. So right now, it it's it's a lot of um. Uh, macro type of work, like looking at like, okay, this could be the department, this might be a budget and and then kind of build down from there. So. And we may end up, you know, very well may end up like, oh, it's may not work. Um, you know, make sure that 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 folks are asking that, like, you know, we've had some pushback, like. What are we doing? Like, this is in an effort to see if there is a possibility of a cost saving by going into something jointly with another town. Um, I it'd be great if it is, it it may not, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff, so um. As far as like public input yet, there's a, there's so many questions that we're not at that point yet to to answer. And there's a lot of macro stuff that like. Still building it out to see if there's a, you know, you start with like a, okay, this, a budget number and. Can we fit these things into this budget and then is there value added from there? So it's it's a, it's been a good process so far. Um, a lot of questions coming out of it and there's still a ways to go. Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of questions, a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff there, but I just want to caution folks that might be asking, you know, what if if we were like, what do we, you know, something going behind closed doors? Like, no, it's it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a public process. Um, it's in an effort to look at cost savings or value added. Um, and we're nowhere near the point of saying presenting something to the town saying, we have all the answers. It's it's it's. It's very, very early on, but we're getting some good information, whatever comes out of it. I guess it's a, it's a good learning process, a lot of information coming out of it. So it's interesting seeing what. Uh, between the two towns, there are a lot of stuff with public works specifically that are very similar, you know. Snow removal doesn't change much between town and town. Now, we have different needs for.
The contractors, that could be coming full circle.
Well, it's it's, you know, I mean, the process isn't, isn't a lot different, you know, rows are rows and downtowns are downtowns, so um. But anything you want to add to that, Andrew, for your takeaway or you?
No, I think it's good. I think it's important to reiterate that we're not even close to being able to answer any questions because we're just starting.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a starting process and exactly and and that we're we're working on like a big idea and it's getting a little down from there, so.
Yeah, specifically the last meeting, we were trying to focus on kind of standards, um, kind of policy that sets standards for. How are the roads going to be maintained in the winter time? What will people expect and trying to balance the, what do we think people want? We have a contract in place today and we can say they like it or they don't like it. Or it's too much, too fast, or or it's not enough often enough. Um, but using what we know currently as a kind of baseline, is that? The Cadillac, you said, is that the the metric to meet? Um, would the community be okay with something any less than that? Um, a slower response, potentially, for example, sidewalks. You know, how, you know, once we can establish. In some regard, the the expectations um are the standards to be met, we can then say like, okay, well, is it reasonable for the sidewalks to be clear? Within twenty-four or maybe forty-eight hours after the last snowfall? Because that'll dictate how many crew members you put out focused on that. Priority. Are they both equal in priority? Um, and so we need to kind of understand what those. Standards are to be expected. And so I think what I'm working on right now is kind of a. Kind of that Cadillac, kind of continuing what, how I see the contract as it currently is and trying to build out a staff based on that. And then one that. Was, okay, you know, we're going to treat all these kind of equally. We're going to try and run a little more lean and efficient. Um, you know, as a lot of public works crews end up doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we can, we kind of have a goalpost for for numbers and a goalpost for expectations.
Yeah.
Uh, that seemed reasonable and then we'll be able to share.
Starting with that, let's let's start with this point, like where we we know we're here now. Let's start with that and then. You know, you can always work down and and kind of figure it out. So it's 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 a process, but um.
Could Sultan Brown uh offer any other models from other towns where it's.
Yeah, he's he's got, he's got a lot to, yeah, he's got a lot of experience and a lot to bring to it. So it's, he's, I think he's very good at it. Giving enough information like when it needs, like do this now. And then like, we can give you models, but. You've got to figure out what your your service levels are first and then we can model it out. So it's 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 it's. It it, you know, there's very, very much, there's there's steps there. You don't move on to step B until. Step A is kind of completed, so it's it's a good way to do it. But we're not, you know, uh, folks may ask like. You know, oh, how much equipment do you buy? Like trucks cost a lot, you know, there's different, and that's, those are all. Very pertinent questions, but we're not there yet. We don't know what the staff size might be or what the the equipment list may be until. The model is built out for your 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 standards or, you know, we want to see this. Okay, what does it take to get to that? And then how many people does it take and how much equipment? So.
So it's 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 an interesting process, yeah, and it's going to take a while and. You know, it may, the hope is that the end result is something that works for both towns and there's a, there's a long-term cost savings or a value added, but we'll get there, so.
That's it. Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, it's a meeting of the committee, kind of like when you're doing a joint board workshop in Newcastle, like. The point is for those two groups, in that case, to come together. The point is for the committee to be able to work. And we certainly encourage people from the public to come and watch. I did not record the last one. There aren't, there will be minutes available. I did record the first one, but not the second one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but we do have minutes as well um that we can make available to the public um.
And so.
Will they be recorded in the future?
That's the plan, yes.
Yeah.
I just.
There was an oversight on our end.
Yeah. Does anybody else have anything before we go into executive session?
Anybody has anything to add for?
Okay.
That's good, okay.
Great, um, we have a lot of stuff to sign, so I'll um. Uh, I'll move us into executive session and then we can sign stuff, hope things get sorted, so. Um, all right, I'm going to make a motion uh to move into executive session um. Pursuant to M R S A four oh five six C, discussion of consideration of condition, acquisition, or the use of real estate, real or personal property. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so we're.